Okay. Thank you, and somebody's background noise is really loud. Thank you. Okay, so call the meeting to order at 4:00 PM, Monday, March the 8th, 2021. As always, remind everybody turn off their electronic devices other than the one we're on. And any deletions or additions to the agenda today? We have one announcement under council reports, Council de Bushi will be doing that. Anything else? Hearing none. I do have a motion here. That the council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, March the 8th, 2021 is a regular meeting of council circulate or amended. Move by.
I'll move, Council Lake.
Second.
Council Lake. Council de Bushi. All in favor? Thank you. I can't see anybody. I gotta see if I can figure this out here. Okay. I can't see anybody. I can see all your names, but I can't see anybody's faces. Okay, sorry. All in favor, just you're gonna have to speak up in volumes because I can't see anybody's faces right now. Sorry about that.
Council de Bushi, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councils and Gray, yes.
Thank you much. Okay. Any declaration of interest?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you. I got a motion here that council hereby adopts the minutes of the regular meeting council held on Monday, February 22nd, 2021. And especially mean that was held on Monday, March the first, 2021 is circulate or amended. Move by.
Council de Bushi.
Okay, Council de Bushi and second by Council Jingra, any arrows or missions in those minutes? Hearing none, call a question? All in favor?
Yes, Lake.
Okay. Thank you. Carrie. Up next, we have a discussion take place regarding the revised 2021 Marathon Library Budget. Copy to all members. I don't know if Mr. Skorchinsky wants to highlight this or Mr. De Bushi, Council de Bushi.
I'll take the lead on this then.
Okay, thank you.
So with discussion with the library board on our last meeting, we instructed the CEO and the chair to revise the budget, taking into account wages and benefits. And some of the other items that we don't foresee happening due to the COVID restrictions, mainly travel and travel mostly. We left in the conferences and whatnot because they're more than likely going to be virtual in nature. And I think it's a reasonable budget when they went back and we looked at it. One thing we have to understand is even though they were not open to the public or have been limited opening to the public. And foreseeably, it should probably will be continuing. We still have the day to day operations that have to happen. So I think it's prudent on their part that they did revise the budget or revisit the budget. And I think it's should be something that councils should consider because this is one of the lead or first boards we've established based on skills basis and I guess governance basis. So I think it's prudent that we, you know, show some confidence in this board moving forward that you know, they've done their due diligence and looked at the budget and kind of tweaked it out. I think also in this budget is also some leeway that in the event that we come out of COVID and the, I'll say rules change on how we open ourselves to public that we have the resources necessary to move forward with it. So that's the gist of the budget. I think it was well submitted. I think it was, there was some explanation on the briefing notes that explained the rationale behind each line and the issue or the issues and pertaining to it. I think the other thing that was important is that the library expected to get new computers via the town. And since we were, they were compromised, we didn't want to put those back in circulation. The town meaning. So the library has had to revisit that as part of their budget moving forward. Thank you.
Any comments, questions? You have to speak up because I cannot, Council Lake.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just for administration, I know what we had asked for was for our administration to talk to the library. And I think that's a healthy relationship given that we're the major funder. I agree with Council de Bushi that we have, you know, specially selected this this board, so we should support them. But I just want to confirm that, you know, our administration worked with the library board and that they were happy with where we got to on the budget.
We didn't really, I can't say, you know, unequivocally that we had no input into the budget, but that was the way that it was pursued by the library board. So no issue from our end. As Counselor de Bushi noted, I think the chair and the CEO have done a really good job of breaking down the budget in their briefing notes and explaining where the category increases or decreases with respect to the revised budget originate from. So it was, in my mind, a well thought out process. I have had some correspondence with the chair and just establishing more of a regular relationship from a communications perspective moving forward between both the board and the municipality. So, you know, overall, I think it was a a well done budget and they did a fine job of explaining where the the discussion items that council wanted them to relook at come from.
Anybody else? So, so I know, in request, when I was sitting on the board, I asked the board chair to direct the CEO to have direct conversation with our CAO. So that there can be a communication highway that is, we're all on the same page because we are the major funder of the library at $160,000 request this year, brought down because we asked him to go back and revisit it. I still think that with the COVID right now in the situation we're in, there could have been a maybe a little harder look at the impact that it has because we are faced with some dilemmas in our own budget. But as administration just stated, they're satisfied with the presentation from the library, but we need to really have that that library budget and that library communication with the CEO and our CAO be current and be continuous throughout the year. And so that we're fully aware of what they're up to from time to time financially, as well as programs and operations, not only through our two members of the board, but also that relationship between a CEO and a CAO, so that there's a continuity there. So with that being said, I don't see any other hands. Okay, so that'll roll into the budget presentation to be brought back from administration for the final budget process in March, April. Anything else? That's good. Okay. Thank you. Up next, we have a verbal update on COVID-19 pandemic, Mr. Skorchinsky.
So just briefly, a couple of items with respect to COVID-19 since our discussion of last week. So no changes at the current time, the Town of Marathon is in the gray lockdown zone as per the Ontario COVID-19 framework. Marathon status is being driven by the case count in the city of Thunder Bay as there are zero cases in Marathon at the current time. The town via council resolution on March the first has asked both the province and the Thunder Bay District Health Unit to remove Marathon from the gray zone and put us in the appropriate color code based on our community case count. We have received zero responses back on our request to date from either the province or the health unit. There's also been no indication from either the province or the health unit on an end date to the Thunder Bay District lockdown. So based on the foregoing, administration is recommending ice removal at the arena this week for the season. And we'll maintain the outdoor rink and Penlake skating trail as best we can as the weather cooperates as we move towards the spring. So pretty, pretty straightforward. I know the mayor has, I'm sure, some comments as he's tried to reach out to the health unit as well.
Yes, thank you for that. And I have reached out on several occasions to Dr. De Mill's office, both in text and in voice message, as well as voice conversation with her executive secretary. And to date, Monday, 4:00 PM, 4:15, I have yet to receive a call back from her in regards to our resolution of last Monday, but also the whole situation happening within the district of Thunder Bay, which we are a part of. And I spoke to the mayor last week as well of Thunder Bay, Bill Morrow, and spoke to other mayors within the region. So obviously, the mayors further away from Thunder Bay have the same concern that we have, but the ones around the city are not fully understanding of the request because of the proximity to the city. And of course, their services, a lot of them are utilizing the city for services. So they appreciate what's happening in the city. In the same time, the regional mayors, it's up to them, to their councils to present a resolution to the to the province through through council, through the Dr. De Mill's office, through the Thunder Bay District Health Unit. So if I do hear anything, I'll share that with council for sure. And I spoke to Mr. Skorchinsky about, maybe tomorrow, we don't hear back, we'll contact the province and speak to Minister Elliott, Minister of Health, and see if we can get something in regards to looking at regional or within the district differences. I see Council de Bushi has his hand up.
Yeah, since we're real okay, we're closing the arena for the for the season, basically. Is there any thought about reallocating some resources to the outdoor facilities that we have still active? And I know the weather isn't going to help us in that case, but it it may be the only option. And because we're between shoulder seasons, it may be something that we can keep them, I guess, up to standard or as well as standard. We do have, or we may have some, you know, resources freed up from the arena operations and the Lakeview operations. So is it possible that we can do something to enhance what we have or maintain what we have right now?
So I'll answer that question, Mr. Skorchinsky, is at least for the Penlakes. I went out yesterday skating. It was a gorgeous day and our staff were out there and they were heating the ice actually with a torch to fill in the cracks. And it was an awesome job. And I thanked the river for what he was doing, but our staff are on top of the Penlake site as well as the outdoor rink. And I know Mr. Skorchinsky identified that last week. So we are, we are on top of that and Mother Nature will be our only enemy right now. So I don't know if Mr. Skorchinsky wanted to add to that.
Really, just to answer the question in general, you know, even though the, you know, we'll be taking, shutting down the plant this week and taking the ice out, we're not far off our traditional schedule where we generally start to transition, you know, the end of March and start to prep for the parks as well as the golf season. So this just gives us a little more time to start that, you know, I think, looking at things like, you know, the clearing of down trees at the golf course, we'll start to look at those things that, you know, a little earlier this year with the weather and the amount of snow. So, you know, we'll allocate the resources where they're best required, I think, to start to get us ready for the spring as opposed to the rest of the winter. But as the mayor indicated, we're on top of both skating areas daily and we'll start to look at our spring facilities as the weather warms up towards the end of the month.
Okay, Council Lake.
Thanks, Your Worship. First off, like, I'm a little shocked, like, I in the job I have, if somebody asks you something, you're not allowed to not answer. You know what I mean? Like, you actually have to respond to people when they make formal requests. So I'm a little dumbfounded as to why we haven't got a request. And I know, Your Worship, you must be more frustrated than I am. But I do wonder about, you know, continue to follow that up. And if in the coming days we get something, maybe we can, you know, save a bit of recreation. I do wonder too about, you know, offering, you know, a travel advisory to Thunder Bay if we could be in the in the red to help us. Failing a response, though, I do agree, it's probably the end of the ice, which is really sad. And I think about the recreation opportunities for kids. Is there something else if the ice goes out and that weather is still kind of, you know, April, May, when it's still pretty wet out, I think about the opportunity to use that ice surface when it's down to cement as recreation. I'm not sure if it would be possible to run any programming in that space. I think about things like there used to be basketball in there or you know what I mean? Just a space where again, young people could in whatever iteration it is in terms of numbers, offer programming. I'm not sure if the CEO has any ideas around being able to use that facility.
Yeah, the challenge is ultimately the fact that, you know, we're governed by the gray lockdown for every single facility. So certainly, you know, we've had internal discussions around, you know, with a different, with an April break as opposed to a March break is running day camps. You know, we would definitely reopen Lakeview and we could offer programming down there once again. So I think there are lots of opportunities for us to to offer something locally, especially for our youth groups, but it is all dependent on us getting out of that gray where you can't have any indoor gatherings. And it is really unfortunate because not only does it impact the current facilities, but it also impacts the ability to plan and allocate resources properly. So, you know, I think that, you know, maybe that is one of the messages that the mayor can also bring back if we have an opportunity to engage with either Dr. De Mill or Minister Elliott is, you know, we really need to reopen our facilities in some form or fashion to offer, you know, that type of programming. I think we need only look at how busy the outdoor rink and the skating trail are, and people want to get out and be active and use our facilities. So you know, I think there's a whole number of reasons for us to continue to be diligent in our messaging around, you know, marathon moving out of the gray framework.
So my comment is back to Council Lake is obviously, yeah, reached out at least now five times to Dr. Mills' office. I fully appreciate your comment about having somebody respond. We're in that, we're in a situation where we're in a gray lockdown and a pandemic and it impacts all of our lives. And as the community leaders that we are for the municipality of Marathon, we should be able to have conversations with our district leaders to understand what the process is and how it's going to unfold and how it impacts our communities. That has not happened. And since the Tuesday of last, so that would have been late February when I reached out originally, before the lockdown was announced on Monday, March the, sorry, Sunday evening from Monday, March the first. So all that being said, when I get a response back from Dr. De Mills, we'll definitely have those conversations, see if we can lift up from the gray to the red. But until then, we can't do anything as Mr. Skorchinsky just mentioned. And we will reach out to the province this week to see if we can make any headway. Very frustrating. I've also not only the fact that called and left messages and then text, but I also done at least five, I think, five different media interviews. So the doctor's offices obviously seen, I've had to seen those interviews on on TBA News as well as Northwest News and CFNO and CBC Radio, CBC and, and I think it was Rock 95 in Thunder Bay. I've done a lot of interviews on this, this resolution. So I'm dumbfounded why I haven't got a response back from the health units. Medical Officer of Health, Council Lake.
This is certainly a hypothetical question because I don't think I can't even imagine trying, but what would the process be to declare not agreeing with a a change from the health unit? Is that something that is within our political ability or we're just beholden to those decisions by the health unit and there's nothing really we can do about it?
So we'll definitely find out more, I think, once we get a hold of the Minister of Health. I think this directive was was identified through the provincial government through the Minister, the Chief Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Williams, to identify areas of 100,000 people where there was a caseload of a certain amount. And I I want to say 40 or more, but I don't know if that's the correct number, but it's up there. If there's that case count plus for the 100,000 residents, then it goes into the gray lockdown. That's why we're there. Thunder Bay, Thunder Bay City has had many, many days in a row of 40 plus numbers. So that's why this, this district is in gray lockdown. Until that number changes, we're all in the Thunder Bay District. So we checked this morning after emerging control group meeting. And I think the Algoma District is like 2.5 cases per 100,000 residents. So they're in yellow right now. Because there's no big impacts within that Algoma District, whether the Sioux or Timmins or, or, you know, even Elliott Lake for that matter, are being, there's no cases. So we're the mercy of Thunder Bay right now because of the situation in Thunder Bay. So I don't see any other hands. So we will update council as soon as we have information and the community for that matter in regards to the health unit and the response from our resolution asking for that that information before the 15th of March. Mr. Skorchinsky.
Your Worship, just before we move forward with the agenda, once we close this item off, we did have an amendment for number seven council reports.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I was just gonna go back to that because I just skimmed over. So yes, Council de Bushi, please, council report.
Yes, this is on behalf of the Historical Society of Marathon. We'd like to pass our condolences to the Frye family. Dick Frye passed away this week or today or yesterday, sorry. We would like to, on behalf of the Historical Society and the town council in the Town of Marathon, we'd like to pass our condolences onto the Frye family to Fran, Joey and Sarah and give our best wishes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Council de Bushi. Yes, Mr. Frye, as it was a great contributor to our community for better part of his life. So thank you very much, Dick, and of course, to his family. I appreciate that. And condolences out for sure. Thanks, Council de Bushi. Up next, we have a report on the 2020 Schedule 22, Section 11 Annual Water Report. Mr. Hishka.
Good afternoon, Your Worship, members of council, on presenting the 2020 Schedule 2 and Section 11 Annual Drinking Water Report. So the following reports are submitted to council for information purposes. Schedule 22 Annual Summary Report for 2020, which is submitted by Northern Water, our treatment operator, and the Section 11 Annual Summary Report for 2020, also submitted by Northern Water. The annual report has been prepared in accordance with both Section 11 Annual and Schedule 22 Summary Reports for municipalities of the Ontario Regulation 170-3 made under the Safe Drinking Water Act. The report is intended to inform both the public and the municipal council on the operation of the system over the previous calendar year. Ontario Regulation 170-3 requires that effective steps be taken to advise users that copies of the reports are available without charge at the town office during regular business hours. The reports must be distributed by the owner to members of the council prior to March 31, 2021 pursuant to Schedule 2 of Oreg 170-3. The 2020 report highlights the following information: system description and specifications, system operating expenses overview, water quality, including sampling and monitoring and flow monitoring and regulatory compliance. Your administration is presenting the 2020 Schedule 22 and Section 11 Annual Report for information purposes only.
Thank you for that report. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Hishka in regards to that annual report? I see Council Jingra first and Council de Bushi. Council Jingra.
So just a question, in that report, it mentions that we need to make sure that the report's available, but also that the public is aware that it's available. So how do we how do we put that information out to everybody that it's, that it is available if they want that report?
We ran an ad in the Chronicle, or pardon me, the Mercury, and we've had some ads on CFNO. And it's also been up on our website.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Council de Bushi.
Yes, so just asking about the, I mean, I understand that Penlake Heights is so far above the pumping stations and the existing wells. With the, well, I guess whenever we have a loss and the backflow of water is automatically triggers an adverse report, I guess it would be. Have we thought about, or has there been thought about the the valve system or anti-backflow valve system that would help eliminate some of that?
So we've affected repairs to the generator system. And knock on wood, the last two power bumps have, we've gone through as, as expected, the equipment operated properly. So right now, everything is fine. Backflow valves will if you have backflow valves in your home, you maintain your pressure, but if no pressure is coming from the booster station, it doesn't help. You know, once you lose, once you use up what's pressure stored in your line. It's about, the boil water advisory is about a set parameter of pressure differential. And once it gets to that point, it requires a boil water regardless of whether pipes were opened or anything else. We know that there was no construction or a water main break, but it's triggered by that pressure setting. So now that the generators are all kicking in properly, we hope that we won't have that issue again.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much for that report. And as always, we make sure we have crate water in our community and thank our operators for that. Okay, up next, we have report on the council remuneration for 2020 in expenses. Mr. Verbal.
Good day, Mayor and council. In accordance with Section 284 of the Municipal Act, the treasurer shall submit a statement of remuneration and expenses paid to each member of council in the preceding year. The remuneration and expenses paid to council are in accordance with policies regarding to council remuneration, municipal vehicle use and travel expenses for members of staff and council. The total remuneration and expenses paid to council in 2020 was $90,808. Amount included in the budget was $96,871. Therefore expenditures are $6,063 less than budget. In addition, Section 283 of the Municipal Act requires that remuneration and expenses paid by anyone must be reported. In 2020, Counselor Lake received $3,354 in honorarium and expenses from the Thunder Bay District Social Services Administration Board. And Counselor Valance received $858 from the Thunder Bay District Health Unit for expenses. This report been provided for your information only.
Thank you for that. It's good that we can be under budget, but obviously, same time, we're not having the opportunity to attend anything and function in a normal way. So that's one of the biggest reasons why the expenses are down, obviously. And could be good or bad. It's always nice to have in face meetings, but at the same time, it's the burnout of video conferencing is getting to all of us, I think. So with that being said, do I have any questions of that report? I see none. So thank you very much, Mr. Verbal, for that report. Up next, we have Council Lake is going to present, provide, sorry, his update on his District Social Service Administration Board. Council Lake. Council Lake there?
I have lost him on my screen.
Okay.
I don't see him showing up, Your Worship. I think he's, he's had a technical issue. So maybe we want to take you with the agenda and circle back if he rejoins.
Okay. I have information received from BT Engineering regarding notice of a study. Sorry, that's no. Let me get back to my agenda here. Where is my other part of my? Yeah, BT Engineering, sorry.
Yeah, that's the right one.
Okay, and so I mixed it with my council remuneration. This is a study area for the, Mr. Skorchinsky can highlight if you like, but a study area for the Highway 17 Little Pick River area enhancements.
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, nothing to really highlight. I only flagged this one because if we recall, we ran into a situation last year with one of these projects at Cedar Lake where it took away public access to the lake. Now, this one's not directly, you know, there's, there's no lake, you know, in geographic proximity to the study area, but just to ensure that, you know, there's no further situations like the one we encountered last year. I just wanted to flag this for council to make sure that they review it. And we'll certainly do the same thing administratively going forward and provide comment.
Okay, there was, there isn't there a road that's affected by the, either the screw clubs coming off of the down lower part of the pick and going back up the hill?
I do, I do not believe they maintain that trail anymore. That would, the trail to Terrace Bay traditionally would fall within that scope, but I don't believe they maintain it any further. But we'll certainly follow up with the snow kickers to ensure that that is recognized through this process.
Sure. And I'm sure this company would have also hopefully sent a copy of this to them as well. Okay, thank you for that.
Counselor.
Yeah, Jingra, Council Jingra.
Yeah, so I just wondered if this is something we could share on our Facebook page or in the newspaper to see if there's other public comments in case other, in case residents do pick up on things like potentially that, that snowmobile trail that was just mentioned or anything else that might be in that area.
Certainly, no issue. And this, this would have been posted, if not already, there will be a requirement in the Mercury for sure, but we can certainly share it on our, through our town resources.
Okay, thank you.
Council de Bushi.
Yeah, I was just wondering too, because of that's a high congestion on traffic. I see the need to explore a passing lane on it, but given the impacts that some of these studies have had on other locations, do we know is that going to negatively affect traffic flows? Because for the last two years, it's been iffy there on the best of times, either it's been the shoulders or the bridging maintenance or whatever it may be. So are we going to be made away? are we going to be made aware by the MTO or BT, uh, engineering if there's going to be, uh, flags, stoplights, et cetera?
Yeah, those are certainly all questions that, uh, we'll ask through this process. Um, you know, and, and we'll take a, a good hard look at it and, uh, we'll, we'll offer those up to, uh, BT Engineering and, and look for a response on those items to be shared with council.
Okay. And Counselor Lake, I see your hand up.
Yeah, sorry, your worship, but I lost a connection there. So I didn't actually get the first part of, uh, the C O's report, but, uh, the, the, the options they were showing, I mean, there are so few passing lanes, uh, between here and Thunder Bay, and that is an exceptionally dangerous stretch of highway, uh, going through some of those curves near Coldwell and the Nays. Was there, I just sorry, I missed it. Is there, uh, like, if we're going to spend money as a province, that's a passing lane opportunity, I think that, uh, we ought to be doing. Are they talking three lanes there? Or are they just talking to rerouting for, uh, angle?
Uh, it's, it seems like it's a realignment plus a climbing, truck climbing lane. So I'm assuming it's going to be the third lane for the truck when they realign it. That's what I'm gathering out of the, uh, the actual, uh, uh, the study area.
Cause that, that to me would be the key part, right? It, it is, it's such a dangerous and tempting hill to pass on. There's so few around there that that is certainly, uh, I think as a municipality, the one thing we would want to make certain of.
Yep. And that's always been the argument through Noma as well, when you're going to do construction and redevelop and, and re, reline the highway that you add the third lane in. No matter where it is, whether it's on a hill or not, and that gives us opportunities to become like the Sweden and the Finland model where you have a lot less accidents, a lot less deaths because you have three lanes all the time. And if you can continuation of three lanes from Thunder Bay to Suse Marine and then four lane, the rest of the province, that's awesome because now you have a really safe highway with three lanes, five kilometers, three lanes, five kilometers east or west, you know, and you share every five kilometers of three lanes. That could happen maybe in our lifetime. Be nice, but I don't know, but we continue to argue that, that point. Good. Thanks. Uh, up next, we have a request received from the region of Hilton seeking support of the resolution pertaining to long-term care uh, homes within the province. It's a lengthy, uh, motion and, uh, I need to move a second to put on the floor.
Counselor Lake.
Counselor Jingra.
Okay, Counselor Lake moves. Counselor Jingra, second. So if everybody's had an opportunity to read it, it's from AMO's report. AMO is identifying that, you know, obviously the province and the, and the private healthcare systems, there was a lot of stuff that we, we found out from the COVID pandemic that wasn't happening in our long-term care homes. So the, uh, the province has been, sorry, the municipality of Hilton has asked the province to, uh, that Halton Regional Council endorses the AMO's recommendations contained in the submission of Long-Term Care and COVID Commission that Halton Regional Council strong years the provincial government to move forward with the implementation of these recommendations, including in citing higher standards and with increased funding to homes implementing standards that have been presented through AMO, that the Halton Region Regional Advocate Society to the federal government to enhance the federal healthcare funding to the provincial and territories governments, specifically dedicating funding to long-term care and undertake further efforts protected to promote restoring physical, mental health, wellbeing of long-term care residents in Canada. And that the Halton Region requests the federated Canadian municipalities to develop a policy and advocacy position and enhance federal support for long-term care. And this is obviously sent off to the, the key people, uh, within government in our province and our, um, Canada. So anybody have any comments on this, uh, resolution presented from Halton Region? I see Counselor De Bushi's hand.
Uh, yeah, I think one of the things that, that it kind of overlooked and, and they kind of haven't stated is federally the, the transfer payments aren't being allocated or dedicated to specific issues. It's up to the province to decide how they're going to spend it. Uh, it hasn't been tiered. And the other issue is the for-profit care facilities. And that's the one that, um, they've let happen. Um, and that's the one that, that has seen some, um, level of service that hasn't been there. So I think one of the things that we should also understand is even though I, I fully agree, we should support that they look at long-term care, but the idea that it's a pay, it's a pay service in a lot of cases. I know, you know, personally, we pay for my father-in-law's care. So it's not just the government getting involved. It's also holding these for-profit issues, you know, or entities accountable also.
Right. And as you know, Counselor, that we've seen a lot of the, the inequities within the homes that both private and provincially run or municipally run for that matter. Uh, because, you know, specifically around the PSW care where PSWs were traveling to many, many different homes throughout the day to provide services for both provincial funded uh, homes and the private care homes. And they were bringing a lot of the COVID related, uh, the spreading to those different homes. So part of the recommendation is also is you're right, that the recommendation is requesting the federal government to, uh, give more funding to the ministers, ministries budget through the Ministry of Health and long-term care. So that will go into one big pot. And like just the PSWs, for example, they should be working at one location, not four or five. And pandemic or not, it's just not healthy for, uh, for individuals to be traveling around two different homes and providing services. And so if they can correct those things and have a little bit more money paid for the PSW services for individuals staying at one. So the, that would probably assist in a lot of the different, uh, care options that, uh, the forty-eight recommendations are addressing. There's many in there, but that's, that's one of the two of them. So I don't see any other hands. Okay. With that being said, I'll, uh, call a question. All in favor of this supportive resolution?
Counselor De Bushi, yes.
Okay. I heard Counselor Lake, Counselor Jingra.
Counselor Tabucci, yes.
Yeah, I heard that, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Gary, thank you. Up next, I have a, uh, resolution that council hereby support, uh, supports the attached resources received from Natasha of Lake of Bays pertaining to the capacity limits in restaurants and stage two under the Reopening Ontario Act 2020. For the copy is most before and it is listed on the originating resolution. Move by.
Counselor Tabucci.
Okay, Counselor De Bushi and Council. Okay. So pretty well standard resolution, talking about the reopening aspect. And I'll just read the therefore. The result that the council of town corporation, Towns of Lake of Base hereby request that the provincial government review and reconsider the capacity limits for restaurants across the province be pa- based on size of square footage of the seating area instead of the flat occupancy rate. And further that this concept of introducing capacity limits for other businesses listed in Schedule Two dash zero of the regulation two sixty-three dash twenty being impacted by the constant uncertainty of their operations during this pandemic, including restaurants, personal care, services, resorts, cash, fitness, recreational amenities, churches, uh, also be considered while in lockdown status. As you know, we are fighting the same issue and, uh, we need, we, we need the government to address this as well as everything else. So I don't see any problem with this resolution. Any hands? I see no hands. Okay. I'm going to call a question. All in favor.
Counselor Tabucci, yes.
Yes, Counselor Jingra.
Look, Gary, thank you very much. Okay. Anything else before we adjourn this meeting?
The D S A P, yeah, item twelve on the agenda.
Big, yeah, Counselor Lake. I'm going to go back here because you were booted off.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, thanks, your worship. Uh, so, uh, from the D S A P, uh, three, uh, three items really came out of the last meeting, uh, one good and a couple of, uh, trying things. The good news was, uh, there's six new accessible suites in a sixty-plus uh, building at Maciver Place in Thunder Bay. Five have already been filled, one, uh, remains, but they're, uh, made specifically for folks in wheelchairs. Um, so that's a, I think a real positive development for the region. It is in Thunder Bay, but, uh, for somebody who had those needs, it is, uh, you know, an additional spot they can go. Um, the, one of the big things that has come to light obviously is the need for emergency shelter care. A lot of the, uh, COVID, uh, cases are in the homeless population. And so the D S A P, uh, we're talking strategy around what to do in terms of isolation. Uh, there are currently, I believe, fifty-four beds through hotels and other things for isolation of, uh, homeless folks with, uh, COVID or, or waiting tests. Uh, so just some concern about whether, given the rise in numbers, that was going to be enough. Uh, and then a third point was the, uh, and this one could impact Marathon, obviously, is, uh, uh, with Thunder Bay, uh, education system going into virtual learning. Uh, the D S A Ps are responsible for childcare and there was no consultation. So, uh, a lot of, uh, especially, uh, essential workers were left without childcare. So, uh, we talked about that from a regional perspective as well, uh, that the D S A P needs to be informed if they're going to go to virtual learning so that we can make arrangements for essential workers and, and childcare. So I think, uh, you know, the, the lesson seems to be a little bit about, you know, folks have worked really well together, I think, provincial, municipal, but I think it's been a long haul and it just feels like some of that is starting to fall apart a little bit. Uh, so our frustrations, just like what we started with today was that the province and the, and the, uh, uh, the education system hadn't spoken to the D S A P. So just trying to further that communication as we all try to get through this.
Okay. So I got a question in regards to that. When you're talking about these, the beds have been, uh, busy, seconded for the homeless, uh, individuals in the city uh, through the COVID protection, I guess, in the sense, we, I had a chat with the mayor last week, like I said, and, you know, the D S A P is working obviously closely with the health unit to identify that and funding, but is there opportunities? Because I mean, some hotels that are making me take the whole hotel over and identify that as a COVID hotel. I'm sure the property owners would be more than, you know, happy to, to accommodate the city or that because they're going to generate a lot of revenue from this. But then it would solve a lot of our problems. Has there been talk around the table of that?
Um, so the numbers that we were given was that the, the number of hotel beds that are being, um, uh, identified haven't been filled yet. There was, I think, fifty, fifty-four beds, uh, identified, and I want to say forty-eight are filled right now. Um, it was more talk around of what happens if we get beyond that number. Um, so, so right now they're, they haven't reached capacity.
Okay. Cause when I, my conversation with the mayor was that if, you know, if you were to spend, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in the short term to resolve a load of the, uh, the outbreak in the city of, you know, like a hundred and eleven cases, you know, today. Um, you know, that, that's a number we, if we can bring that back down and open it back up and get, you know, situation under control, the economics will, will return the, the money tenfold. But when you have, uh, businesses that are potentially going to be closing and golden, going under, and now there's loss of jobs and of course economic base to the city impacts the region, all those things, right? So money sometimes spent today will save a lot of money tomorrow and, and generate a lot of revenue and economic growth. So I just keep that on the, the agenda, I guess, for your discussion with your board. Anybody else, uh, questions to Counselor Lake? Hearing done. Okay. We, uh, we are going to go into in camera, discuss, uh, uh, personnel issues, uh, negotiations, uh, plan, procedures, criteria and instructions to be applied to negotiations carried out on or to be carried out on behalf of the municipality or local board under Section 201, directly following this in this public meeting. So if nothing else, uh, we will then adjourn at the hour of four, four forty-three PM. I need to move a second to adjourn.
Move by Counselor Tabucci.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So Counselor Jingra and Counselor De Bushi. Thank you and have a good night to everybody. And then we'll stay on and go into our in camera meeting. Thank you. Good night. Okay, Jamie, you got it off?